...Alistair Boardroom in the Bay City I S D Administration Building. This meeting was hosted according to law and we do have a core present. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order and we will start with Education Chief Kennedy. He's very good at this. So please stay with us.
First question. Now, pardon of the day, your place you who are our best of flow. We thank you for many blessings that you give us day by day. God, we have blessings upon the school district, upon our superintendent, upon our school board, upon all of our parents, students, and employees. God, I ask and I, the Father, that if they conduct their business, oh Lord, that you will guide them, lead them and direct them. That Lord, everything we do, that will be done in your honor and your glory. Now, Lord, we thank you for this day. We ask it in the most powerful name we know, in Jesus' name. Amen.
This evening, we have ten home students that will be leading us in our class.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which France, one nation, under God. In this court, the religion is God. Honoring the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one nation under God, one nation.
Thank you. All right, moving on to good news. Does anybody have anything good that they've seen in the school district since our last week?
I've seen lots of good things, positive things. Uh, starting with, um, the football game on Friday. Our coaches and the staff, all of them share grounds. I said all over them where the band is before it was totally chaos. This year, it was so nice. It was so well organized and so, I mean, planned to the max. I give you all the great credit and how to do a wonderful job in Colorado now. And then the second one is to all the volunteers that were down in the admitted rockets, boy, they're long. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And it was so nice to see how y'all all came together. And I think it's just a short path, right? Y'all have another one planned on the twenty-third.
It's still up in there. We had, we hadn't set a date yet. I've been working with Mr. Eaton on setting a future date to go back to clean up the rest of it and really keep it in check.
Okay, it's one last request. Okay, one last request. If we get enough volunteers and your staff, can we kind of clean up the grass? Because then you make it hard when you.
We're, we're, we're working on that this week, picking up all the stats. We're working on that this week, uh, to get that scooped up and all out of there.
Okay, good, thank you. I appreciate you, I appreciate you. I didn't even know you might have called up. Uh, we need to get it. And then, uh, Mr. Hayden, oh, he very, he's on, and I'm like, you know, and right, but thank you.
Well, yes, I also want to convey, Ms. Robinson, thoughts of, I thank you guys a lot. It means a lot that you took that on as a, a responsibility, which is not dedicated solely to you guys. Those are great jobs and I really appreciate it. And that, that comes from, uh, members, uh, community members that came up to me and thanked me for, you know, uh, told me to give you guys thanks. And, and this whole field.
And the last one. This day, they say, the country class, you say, hey, can, can, I can, there. They thought that was so fun. It was like, thank you, that person.
Uh, right now?
Doing it in your presence.
Maybe, maybe a couple weeks from now.
Yeah, I mean, that, those just to any cell, so far. I appreciate you. And I cannot say thank you enough to Bay City High School. I don't know what else to say, but thank you. Thank you for everything you do. It's lots of hard work, everything you've put into that. And to the athletic, uh, she's not here tonight. Um, Linda? Oh my God, that little lady is called over the place and doing everything. And they changed those Linda's. I mean, it was like, okay, you know, split from Linda license to Linda. Sure, sure. And it's working, it's magic. They're definitely doing wonderful. And then I got a call from, uh, a parent about Lady Roberts, talking about how well managed y'all must teach us on that, I'm like, sorry, y'all. You know, but for parents to convey that to me meant a lot. And, uh, so I thank all of you. The last one, I talked to y'all last week, the diversity. See, I look at things different. My thing is, if you want to see me put on my glasses, it's not because I'm being cute, it's because I can't say. Uh. For all of those activities that night from the band to the, uh, act, once I talk, the risque. Hmm, I mean, everything, I looked at everything. The kids that, uh, uh, I, they challenged, I mean, all this blended in as if it didn't make a difference in who I am or what you think of me. I'm still a boy. So one of the boys gave me a heart. So, but to your heart, I've been practicing to do this. So I'm giving y'all a heart. Thank you for everything and I know that it's not an easy job. Your jobs are not easy, but we sure made it work. And I appreciate you.
Anything else?
Anything else to say?
Teacher, all the things.
I'll, I'll just say our, our traveling fans, we're, we're traveling this year because we're not home and then we're away and we're not away at home, I suddenly fan at football. So I'll just say it's been fun going to the other stadium and sitting with the traveling parents. About nine hundred percent of them are respectful, so we've got a good sideline. So, yeah, we've got a lot of support up there, so that's been fun as well.
Yeah. So I've been telling us, you can feel it, it's good. I've been on several of the campuses just with my own kids and so, the things that are happening are great. And I truly appreciate the hard work. So I know moving into this time of year is still just fast pace, so thank you for what you're doing.
Oh, Lord.
Thank you for what you're doing, Chief. All right, um, moving on, anything else?
And bridges, bridges to.
Yes. Bridges, it provides the best fields. Uh, okay, next is celebration of excellence. Hello, ma'am, how are you?
Great.
This is an exciting celebration of excellence for us.
Yes. So tonight, we are proud to celebrate ten of our students who earned Cola Award National Recognition. To be eligible, these students have taken the P S A T in their junior year and maintained a GPA of three point five or higher and then were identified in an underrepresented group across our nation for higher education. So these awards have not only their academic achievement and determination, but also the potential as future leaders and scholars. This recognition can also provide them really valuable scholarship opportunities and college opportunities as they continue their educational journey. So we're gonna honor their hard work, we'll recognize them, and then together we'll take a picture with Ms. Lopez and provide a specific sign. So we have two that were not able to be present. So first off, uh, Kyla Cook was National School Recognition Award and National First Generation Recognition Award. Ian Rockos, who was the National School Recognition Award as well. Tonight, first up, although I'm not sure these are order, so I'm gonna find it. Um, is Grant Friselman, National School Recognition Award and National Rural and Small Town. Second, we have Jasmine Lynn, National School Recognition Award and National Rural and Small Town Recognition Award as well. Miss Gonzalez, National First Generation Recognition Award, National School Recognition Award and National Rural and Small Town Recognition Award. Then we have Catherine Lopez, National First Generation Recognition Award. Miss Morris. Alan Munoz was also National First Generation Recognition Award and National School Recognition Award. And then Arsalie Padron, National First Generation Recognition Award. Nicole Tane, National First Recognition Award, National School Recognition Award and National Rural and Small Town. It looks like that is Ashley Martinez, National First Generation of Recognition Award and National School Recognition Award. Sorry, sweetie, it's. In addition, this is not one of the certificates, but one of the recipients tonight also received a really awesome award and Ms. Lopez gave me a script for that since she was unable to be here tonight. So we wanna make sure that we recognize and call it as well. She, um, was selected as the big future ambassador, our first ever for Bay City High School. And what this award entails is that she will play a role in helping peers navigate their journey through college and the career process and share resources, scholarships, opportunities to help their research goals. Throughout this, she will gain herself invaluable leadership, communication, and marketing skills while planning her own future education. So we're very excited about it.
Congratulations to each of our students. That's a big achievement. All right, moving on, audience with Patreon, but I do not believe we have any this evening, so we're gonna go straight into our Bay City governments, starting with C C M R possibly.
So Mr. Howley is gonna do his dance and put our data up there, but I'll leave the data, we'll share it with you guys in advance. So a little report related to what's going on right now with C C M R. We started this year with a group of seniors that have thirty-two percent of them have already college career military readiness requirements in some way, shape, or form. A reminder that they can do that either by passing their T S I, getting scores with their S A T, A C T, or annual credit. What's really exciting is that we also have some underclassmen that are on their way to success and you'll notice in the red that some of those are noted as kids who already earned certifications, which is the other way of getting your C C M R, uh, cre- credits. But they are in their level two course now. So as long as they finish their level two course, that will also then be validated. And so we're a little bit higher, um, than we anticipated really to start the year because normally our underclassmen groups start kind of around ten or fifteen percent. Really good, uh, that we also have some other things that are going on already to help with the underclassmen as well as the upperclassmen. So we've been offering some T S I sessions. In fact, this week and next week, we will be strategically testing all students in pre-cow. And algebra two students will come after that, that we wanna make sure we target math in the first semester so that we're, we're looking at them being in the right placement as well with their coursework, but then also getting those points. And then our seniors have a little bit more incentive this year. We're trying to twist our arm a little bit to get everything sooner than later. And so this year, if they finish their end ready criteria or pass the T S I, whatever form, then they will be eligible to have additional off periods in the second semester. So it's a little added incentive to try to get us there a little bit sooner because we are starting a little bit lagging behind from where last year's seniors were. And what we accredit that to is that really with last year's seniors, we were able to have um, a little bit more push of the T S I in the school year and in the second, uh, semester. We tend to get more anyway, but we had a little bit more, um, with the early college applicants. And then of course, we also, we now have a lot more students that are pursuing the, uh, industry-based certifications, but we're having to hold off on counting those until they've completed their level two requirements. But we're on track for doing that. So you'll notice just kind of our action steps right now. We wanna do fall T S I sessions. We are offering in October S A T, that's one of the highlights that we're sharing as a talking point. Mr. Townsend asked us to kind of be thinking about some of those things for our own T S I testing site, for those who might not be familiar with that. Means they don't have to go to a junior college to take that test. They can take it right with us as many times as they choose. And we use our C C M R outcomes-based bonus money to return the profits on that so that we're paying for their testing sessions. But then in addition to that, we have fall dual credit already started. So in the second semester, anybody who was first time dual credit student earning it for the first time, then that will be the initial data that we'll be able to capture and share with you the next time. Any questions related to the C C M R? I like that we're able to go back to the scouting report for y'all instead of just the linear format. Uh, but we did keep the linear format off to the side just so we can see just traditionally how students are growing. And, uh, we've been tracking it that way. A reminder that Mr. Uh, Howley will talk a little bit about some of the state data, but that our C C M R data is lagging. So when it counts for accountability, it's the previous year's graduating group. So we, um, definitely had a, a few things that we're really excited about this past school year, but that will be lacking data until next school year, then it won't come up for the eighth year of the time.
Thank you so much. If you go on into the eighth year, we'll put back to the.
No, uh, this evening, Ms. Robinson, you had mentioned a thank you for us helping out in COVID Roberts. Yeah, I, I appreciate that, but you don't have to thank me for that this fall. Right? And, uh, as we do, so I look out here to people I work with on a daily basis. And I ask, is, I have questions, this is what you do. So, uh, just wanna say that we're really supportive of that. Let you know what my stance is on that. Now, because I know these folks do this, um, with them all the time. And so, uh, I just wanted to know that, as we're at this. Well, none of that, uh, today we'll talk a little bit about state accountability. And, uh, you know, we're rated on a lot of different banks from state and federal level. And there's a lot of differences while we are that way. And some people would say, uh, you probably heard today to the, um, A through F, state accountability. But at the end of the day, we have to be rated at some point. We have to know where we're at, where we stand, and we have to be accountable for whatever that looks like. Because unfortunately, there are some districts and some campuses that don't hold up to the standard they should for other people's children that they can do. So it's good that we have something like this, but, you know, sometimes they change the rules a little bit, it's unfair. And so it's gonna be a little bit of history of it. Uh, we started back in A through F to, uh, look at accountability in twenty seventeen. What exactly does that mean? And it's exactly that, it's a report part for schools and for districts. So it gives people in the state that may be relocating to a different district or a different campus, what exactly they're really into. And it takes a variety of factors into play. And of course, that's changed since twenty seventeen. You can see, uh, the first system comes out, our first A through F rating, twenty eighteen. It, uh, rocking and rolling. Excuse me, then the last one, it's twenty nineteen, of course, twenty twenty, uh, COVID comes in, so there's no star at that point. And then we moved to an online version later on, but with the online version, they give it a read as far as scoring is concerned. And then we give another year, uh, as to figure out what's going on because you start to see a what-if tool coming in there. Because we're seeing kids come out of COVID and we wanna see how that's gonna look and anticipate where our rating system could be. So you see it in twenty twenty-four, we see our first one with the methodology that's utilized for mathematical part to determine what our A through F is. And generally, you would say that when you go into the classroom, you report, but you can see, hey, I'm gonna get, uh, this week assignments and if I pass this meeting and I average it out, that's what my grade is. It looks a little different in that, uh, on R V through F rating. As a matter of fact, it takes three things into consideration, right? One is rigor, you see graphics, be fair to all schools inside there, this is straight from the text application. And then second part is transparent, because it's the honest, if we're not transparent, we are the community. Well, it looks like right, it's on. And if we're really gonna help our students get better, it takes everybody. So everybody needs to know where we're at. Now, the, the good news is, is that when you're doing really well, you might show that. Bad news is when you're not, like, we can keep them in the closet for a little bit. Now, let's just show them where we're at. As a matter of fact, at Bay City I S D, we have a rate of progress in the right direction. We have the right people on our right bus, on our right attention. And we wanna utilize all three of these components when we look at the state accountability and rating systems to make it to our full advantage so that our district and our campuses and our principals know exactly which way we can get better, I can stand in front of this thing. So how we rate it overall? And like I said, we take all the grades into consideration on a whole report part, let's say, of ten assignments. Take that number, five by ten, if you're average. It's a little bit different because if we did it that way, it would be a little unfair. If you did it in the district level, you wouldn't be able to identify specific campuses that are one doing very well or some that are maybe needing that opportunity for growth. Wouldn't be able to very strategically focus our resources to specific areas where we need to put the effort to the classroom and what we're looking at and how we can help address those issues and support it in the right way. So it's, it's a weighted measurement when you look at it in this aspect. Now, there's three different domains here, one, two, and three. That first domain, we're gonna go over, and the second, we'll go over a little bit, that's pretty, you know, we're. You look at domain one and two, that's seventy percent of our progress scores, also its achievement, right? So we're gonna take either how they're doing or what their progress is, whether the higher the T B is, and that's the score. Right, so achievement first, you gotta act like you're with the relative performance improvement. The third part, there's closing the gaps. And how do we determine all of these aspects for district level? Well, it's the same concept, we just use weighted assessment, right? So you take each portion of the score based on how they've done and you weight it as a certain percentage of that type here, that's the methodology of that. I didn't wanna go, I didn't wanna order that, I'm just gonna kind of do graphics and be able. So how do we look at domain one as sleep achievement? Well, it's a little more difficult when you're at the elementary level because they're not taking an actual test. So we do things on our backend that help, um, assess where our students are, right? Beginning of the year, call it B O Y, we do it, M O Y was early year, right? So we do an assessment along the way, we use third-party methods to help us with those assessments. One, we use at that level is an in-class, that are prior to, so these are the two big parts that we use to get that information out. Plus, we also use, uh, world, you know, in-class and in-deduction, right? So you can look at this part right here, right, for these little ones. And when we start taking a star, right, and you get a little higher up in the first grade level, right? As far as we start taking that in first test, right? Our campus right there is gonna be a hundred percent of that, right? So stars, a hundred percent of words slated in, in domain one. So this is all of our students in domain one. This is a specific group, this is everybody. In the middle school, you're gonna be, you see a hundred percent of star, but in the high school, it's different. It's a forty, forty, twenty split, right? So here's a star, right, and you see C C M R, which, very, right? That helps us in a lot of ways. And then twenty percent of graduation, right? When you look at, uh, domain two, this one could kind of drive you crazy. But ultimately, what it is, it's just where are we at progress for students here every year? That's all business, right? Don't confuse it for anything else. What are our kids doing this year and what are they doing next year? And that's, that's what we're tracking as we go on, that was two parts in this. And you may score really well in one and not so well in the other. The good news is, is you're gonna take the higher of the two. And once you get the higher of the two, that averages into your scale score, which is that, that letter, that was. This is another part, part, uh, of domain two. These are just examples of graphs you can utilize, so I'll have to do that, right? You got a diagram on one side, a graph on the other. The idea here is that you can start using that what-if tool if you like, plug in the numbers and see what you could be if you get X points. Domain three is closing the gaps. It's really kind of hard to filter out. We're looking at a, a variety of groups, about eighteen different sub pops that we're looking at. We look at overall percentages, and how are the, then we look at genders, and we look at different ethnicities, and all these different districts, and all that plays a role. And you're looking for a pattern, right, in particular. So here, like I said, domains one and two, this is what's actually progress, right? Domain three for all students. And domain three, we're distracting the course of pops and specific high focus groups, right? Four individual high focus groups that we're gonna focus on in particular. That's economically disadvantaged, which has been going with Bay City I S D, is broadly students. We have special education students, which is a pretty good percentage as well, right? And we have our minority, right? And then that next group right there, foster homeless and or migrant students, if that is added, this is your fact. Four focus groups that we're looking at. Uh, when you're trying to close those gaps, because sometimes these groups are sort of speaking, getting where they're at, to be a little further behind than us. More importantly, this is such a small machine that you get more bang than you're about, and it's successful. Not just for the simple fact that the students are being successful, but in a mathematical and a radius perspective as well. So what do we do with that, right? So is it even beneficial for us and does it help us? And the answer to that is yes, you definitely wanna keep track of that data because you don't, you don't know where you're going. So I tried to put it up here all fancy, like, it didn't work out so well. So I just did it the old-fashioned way, right? So this is kind of an idea, some magnitude of data that's just seen as set side by side. These are, our campus is based on achievement by levels. On the left-hand side, you'll see us as a district and you're just gonna go through campus by campus, right? Kind of see, uh, the direction in which we're going here. The red means there's some root for growth, green means we're either right on par, here we're moving in the right direction, right? So on the right-hand side, you can see our comparison based on state, region, force, uh, state, region, right? You see us right there. Now, it's broken down into three different categories, A through F, star rating, this is remember? Domain twenty-two, this is where we're at, elementary level, different middle school level, right? Only a portion of this counts at the high school, most of that's C C M R and graduation rate. When you get your brochure speaks and masters, those are the three different levels in which you are achieving based on rigor and the success of the student in the classroom, like assessment that they took. So in other words, they take a test in the start level and they did a lot of the shape writing, right? They did it all right, masters, then based on the percentage, it's gonna keep going down there. Now, that can change from year to year because it's based on the achievement from your younger child in the state. So that, that's kind of a floating target, changes every year, keep that in mind, okay? You can see there's areas where we are red and there are areas where it's green. And I wanna keep that in mind because when you look at the A through F rating, there is a good, there, there is reason to compare that A through F rating, but it's, it's more important to compare us to see where our growth is relative to our performance, right? It's a direct proportionality on how we're moving forward as a campus or as a district. So that being said, we're gonna come back to that in a second. Oh, sorry, what's wrong? How do we see some of these areas that we had some growth in there, right? So I showed you some of the red, you'll see some of the A through F. Y'all seen this step, I think I've had a part, a week and a half, next two weeks. So you kind of understand where we're going here. These are some steps we're gonna take at the district level to address the start of, in particular. There are some other areas we're gonna work on, but the few things in particular, I've got to avoid you creating all these. There's a few things that you've got involved with to help prepare some of the money, Mr. Townsend. He brought up securing a lot of grants for us, station on the Lasso Grants. He's available for, uh, every district, uh, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. And it's used to help us implement, uh, different regimens, a little bit more rigorous, a smaller level. Those are focusing upon their receipt at university, right? Especially from a smaller area, to a middle area, to a higher area. And I'm sure you know the graphic, it's gonna make a lot more sense. I'm gonna make sure that that's happened. We're gonna implement research-based strategies inside the classroom. This is such a fun, no cloud, but these five folks are over here, are gonna monitor our practice. So we're gonna go in there, we're calibrated together, we're gonna work together, and we're gonna make sure that we're implementing with the delegate that we have in place. We've got the money for it, it was a piece of. So starting in those areas of focusing that growth is important. We could go through and attack twelve to fifteen different things, and we'll get another touch. We're gonna focus on repeat, we're gonna improve a little bit of those, we're gonna accomplish what we need to, a little bit at a time. Because we're not looking just for one year, we're we're ten years out, right? Where are we gonna go by now? So these are some of our eight correct rates, right? This is basically the I S D right here, you can see, see all the brains as far as where we're at. We have one red. And if you remember correctly, that's part of domain two, so that red doesn't come against us, right? The higher one, uh gave us a uh, this two right here. If you look at twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five, the seventy two is what we get, because it's higher than sixty eight, even though we had the names, right? So keep that in mind as we before. Now, you have ten homes here, and you see you have three reds, and you have two greens. Here's what I want to point out to you, right? You can see uh performance closing the gaps, the overall score. Two things you should know about this. One, Teddy Holmes actually went up one letter grade. They went from an F to a D, which is actually pretty significant, because it was a huge jump, and they very missed the C. But the one thing I do want to show to you, if I can figure out how to do that, is this record. Now, when you look at this, and you looked at what I just showed you, you would probably initially take a look and say, hey. Probably one of our campuses is giving a lot more attention, either through vacancies or because of some of the performance. We're not so sure about, look at all those friends. If you look at Teddy Holmes, and you see how much they've progressed from here, from last year to this year. Now, granted, they may not have kept up with whatever the state does. But we are making progress, and in some areas, a lot of progress, that's ten point progress for a difference. That's a differential of a huge number. And that's a true testament to the work that the teachers are doing, that the students are doing, and that they need to help the students get a little bit better. So I don't want you to be fooled by my graphics to the other, let's see exactly what we've ever done. That's why the longitudinal data is so important, that we actually can break it down by each area, the order of people. We have to be targeted, otherwise, how are we gonna get better? By the way, I have a question, I'm sorry about this. Maybe kind of, just alright, alright. So we got our our base at Junior High, so we can bridge out there. Uh we got high school, right, and we, I'm gonna disclose you talk about some of these items to remember, right? We're still higher than state average, we're just not quite as high. This one's pretty cool, right? So C C M R results, and when you look at the ninety nine to ninety four, I don't, I mean. In talking to this exposure, I mean, the the differential here is one is a lack time of the year. So by the time we have this conversation again next year, that that's probably gonna be higher simply, because. We're either gonna find some people that were coded incorrectly, or we'll give it a good ride. Or we'll find that they passed through the history case of vacations, because it had to be high school, that needs to take this test. A lot of this can change, look at the state. We're ninety four, states, I'm close. So overall, we keep, based on the I S D, you think that, y'all see this before, right? Most of, obviously, you know, football's a big deal here, right? Yeah, I like I like our guys, but. That number on the right is our percentage of our kids when they come to us. The higher grades are, right? So when they're small enough to come, they come to us, they're only eighty percent compared to the state. Now, that forty three percent is our neighbors, right, to the east and west of us, I'm not gonna say our neighbors, but you know what districts they are, right? You look at that, and you're probably thinking, wow, y'all not a, where I am. Well, that's us at the end. So they come to us at eighteen percent, we get them to almost, we get a twenty seven percent of their own years. And so if you stay with basically I S D, you start at the beginning, you go all the way to the end, and the numbers just all show and prove exactly what we give. It makes a difference. What we're doing does work, and it doesn't matter, and we're going in a direction where it's gonna look a lot better than short amount of time. So if you want to take a look at some of the action plans under hyperlinks for, just went and put the overall ratings inside there. And those action plans are done by each campus. They're one pages, they're a little more in depth and detailed and mind of it, right? So we talked about some other things, I have a little more book for purposes for, you get the gist of what we're. Any questions on A direct rating?
What?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, it is, it is. High school though? Yes, ma'am. Now, remember, in academic growth, that's part of domain two, so relative performance and growth. Performance is certainly more bang than your buck. If you perform well across the board, everything else will kind of take care of itself. Uh you may have an outlier growth, but remember, because it's a D, they're going with the higher, it's even up the stretch, so we're gonna have some. You're not gonna just hit that, that that bigger, that D, which is why our high school can't always be over.
And two rocks?
Yes, ma'am.
And then D, D and then an F?
That's correct, it is an F in there, uh however, the longitudinal data at that one in particular, there is about a six point differential in the right direction. So they're moving up the right direction now. And a little short where they're at yet, but remember, overall, the last time we were rated, they had an F. They jumped eight, they went higher, they're almost a C, which is almost unheard of, uh in a short amount of time. So the work that that campus is doing is phenomenal. And I've been on that campus many times, I've been in those classrooms, they're using H Q M I, revenue department, ratio, that fifth grade. That third grade and that fourth grade, I'm racing. And they may not have started off that way, as if I were overwhelmed, but once we got in there and working with them, and even today. As far as yourself, was at all day meetings with coaches from region three to help our teachers get better, and instituting this degree. Okay, it's almost like learning right by public. So uh I'm excited to see the difference, and I'm excited to see it, but it's not what we want to be, of course not. We don't want it even in certain part of that. And I will tell you, if every two years doesn't happen, we got other problems. If we start rolling to have three, two more years of the D, we'll have other issues, right? We're not there yet, we're still in global control, you can still take it, and we're we're taking steps to make sure that you're coming out. So one more year, good. I'm not that tired here. I feel like that uh our goal is to look at another ladder all around. Right, all around, so we always want to try, everybody wants to be at a hundred. But right now, we want to be a little more realistic with our growth here, so if I'm looking overall, I'd like to see our vision as an overall score would be, and if it breaks me. Once we get there, we're comfortable with that, and we'll start climbing that ladder on today. Well, progress growth, right, and so academic growth, if you're looking at that, some of the G. Yes, ma'am.
Because the teachers and the principals are real good about asking for what they need to move it on. That's why I'm too proud to be in this, because they are very verbal in what their needs are. And as a district, we try to provide those needs. Now, I tell you, I look at it, it's a difference in, so. I know that each grade level. As a team, do you call them team leaders, input, a lead person? And then you have coaches. And then you have the administrative staff. What are we missing? In this whole thing? And uh, and I do know that. I didn't say something like that, Jim, so I can't ask you. So, no, not you.
Okay.
Okay, not you. Um, I want to hear from Teeny Homes, and that wasn't meant to be ugly.
No, that's okay.
Okay, okay. Uh, I want to hear from Teeny Homes, and I want to hear from Junior High. And what I want to hear, once again, don't tell me what you think you know. Tell me what you do. Don't talk at me, talk to me. So if it's something that we are missing. As a district, and not providing you with all that you need, then we need to know. Because both of these grade levels, especially Teeny Homes, is so crucial. It is so crucial, so we'll go with you first. What is it that you need that we need to push forward to get you to where you need to be? We had to, we had to think, okay, I get it. But if I put Ms. Commons in there and asked Ms. Commons, give me numbers. How many kids were actually present on that day? And how many was actually present during the year? And Ms. Commons can plug those holes in and tell. And so what is it? That we need? What is more that we need to provide for you to ensure that these kids are successful? I mean, tell me, you're doing after school, a Saturday school, you do uh tutorials. You have all of these people in place, yet and still. I I get the growth, because I have a child, and I have a grandson, so I know when they went from crawling to walking, that was a big deal. I knew when they went from this to that, it was a big shift. I know it's steps, so we're in this step thing, so what I need you to know, what is the next step? That we need to provide you so that those kids, and I don't like D's and F's, I'm gonna just say it, I don't. I really don't like Cs, because Cs is just that, see me come in, see me step at the door, see me sit down at my seat. That's what a C means to me. And that may be just the teacher part of me, the educational part of me, but that's what I see. So I see that we jump from there. Don't say we went from crawling to walking. Okay, now that I'm walking, I need to make sure that you're balancing that, and you can walk on your own. If we are not providing what you need, then we need to know. I need you to to come outside their box, come out and tell us. Not what you think we're gonna hear, but what it really is in reality. Can you answer that for me?
Are you referring to?
I'm talking to student growth, I'm talking about school, I'm talking about.
The the hyperlinks on each of them is their plan, is what they mean?
I saw that.
So is that what you're referring to?
I I saw those plans, and I've seen those plans now for years, I've seen them. I I I see those plans. But. This was a question, please don't interrupt me, oh, so you can't be in the middle of my thoughts, I'm listening. So I'm asking you, what else do we need? We have campus volunteers, you have all of these things put together. And for all of these kids that are not successful, to push us to work, they need to be, it is something that we miss. What are we missing?
Well, first off, I'm sorry that you feel that going from an F to a D is hard. Um, however.
I understand the game, I'm just, and I question you.
Because you're not interrupting.
Okay, okay.
I think the program thing here is for trustee Robinson to address the superintendent, who's our only employee, and trust, and Townsend, Chris Townsend can get us, our being interested that you need, but. Um, I don't know that this engagement is gonna be.
No, we're not gonna do.
So what I do want to say is to help frame it out just a little bit, is remember that last year was the very first year that was a full year of consistency. And that year, the year before that, they were dealing with, starting the year with ten teachers short. Administrator turnover in the middle of the year, and so for them to move from an F to a C is is moving in the right direction, right? And so I think what you're asking is, because what they need is support and consistency. So that they continue the practices that they started last year, right? Got to fully implement it for a full year, which is having a positive effect, is to be able to continue that into the next year. Um, but I think what maybe you're asking is, is there something else in addition that we are not providing them? To help them continue along that way, is that what you're asking, Robinson? Okay, so basically, is there something you're lacking as you're going on and implementing? And you have your plans in place that you need from us that that maybe you've been afraid to ask for?
No, I'm not afraid, uh, Mr. Townsend and and both, Mr. Townsend and Mr. Hallie, um, know, uh, that I'm not afraid of asking. Um, neither are our teachers, our instructional coach, um, nor our assistant principals. Uh, we create very detailed and explicit plans that we follow through and implement at one hundred percent the entire year, one hundred and eighty five days, one hundred percent of the time. Um, however, our students do come uh to us with uh significant learning gaps, more than three year learning gaps. Um, and I only have control of what uh we can implement and teach at Teeny Homes. However, we are working in vertical um alignment, uh we are in our second year of vertical alignment that is going great. Um, just how Mr. St, Mr. Hallie said earlier, I am excited also of uh waiting, you know, because everything is is, it's longitudinal, longitudinal data. You know, we have to collect this data, so um it it doesn't turn over in twenty four hours, you know? Uh, it takes a whole academic year to see the growth and to teach the students. So based on what we get, we we then um work with our teachers and our students and our parents, and make sure that we follow with great consistency. Um, we have P L Cs every week, um, we take our tests, and then we just take it from there. But uh, am I afraid of asking, frankly? No, um, am I lacking anything that the district is not willing to provide to us? No, but everything takes time.
And I appreciate that, and I was not wanting to engage in a trouble. I was asking the same question, but I guess from different people saying the same thing that I said, yeah. So I am on track with what you're doing. But that's exactly what Chris just mimic what I said, but I guess it was a difference in my presentation. I don't know what the difference was, I thought it was the same thing. I just need to know if it is something else that we need to provide to you, that's all I'm asking. What is, do we not have enough staff, do we not have where, do you all trying to put me on a timeframe?
No, I'm not, just, I want to.
Do we, do we need to, so you're okay with everything that you have? Okay, that's all I want to know.
Every single one of our classrooms is with immigration.
Okay, and Ms. Commons, uh, I I read it, but you know what I need from Ms. Commons, and can you tell me? Not now, provide me an email, you know how you do your breakdowns, okay? Can you provide that to me?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's all I needed to know.
I think real quick, just to, if you'll go back to the slide, it's the football field real quick, just to show where our students start. So our literacy rate, which is something that we've been talking about for a long time, which is why we're doing free K partnerships, why we're doing a lot of work at Cherry. To get those students up, because that's where it starts, is our kids come in at a much lower rate. Than any district around us and the state. I don't remember what the state level was, but I remember it being significantly higher than where we are literacy rate.
It's closer level.
So I think that's where the key is. So if there's something not happening, it's that our kids are coming to us already laggy, and we're trying to play catch up from day one. And that is the problem, so then you see it, you see it at Cherry, you see it at Lenny Roberts, you see it at Teeny Homes, you see it at Virginia High. So it is a systemic problem, it's not that we're not doing anything in my, from where I'm seeing it. It's that we have students that are coming in at a much lower rate for early literacy. Than any district surrounding and even the state, so we're having to play major catch up. In the process, and it's just taking longer, but as you see from our C C M R and the data at the high school, they're getting there. It's just taking a lot longer to get to that.
It wouldn't make any sense if Teeny Homes wasn't below rated, and Junior High was in middle, and the high school.
Yeah.
And then the C C M R number was through the roof.
Yeah.
Because to your point, we're just elevating everybody.
Right.
All the way through.
Right. One thing to add to that, Mr. Hallie, if you flip back to the graphic where there is the growth for the high school, um. No, the one that had all three campuses. At high school, academic growth is only measured by two courses. Whereas C C M R is the entire population of seniors, even though it's lagging data. The only two courses that are measured for academic growth at the high school are English two and Algebra one. And Algebra one, the highest testers took it in eighth grade. And so when we are measuring growth from eighth grade math to Algebra one, there's no honor students that are included in that calculation. And the state moves the target. So they changed what the expectation is for them to make each of the performance levels. And they did that to English two as well. So even though English one and English two are the closest vertically aligned subject area, I would say, if within any of the star. They changed what the performance level was at the top, so even if students made more points, it did. So even if students made more points, it didn't count because it wasn't enough if it didn't move with the mark. So something to share along those lines is we don't get to set what those progress targets are. However, what's really exciting for all three campuses is that we now have teachers that are involved in the teacher incentive allotment. And those courses that can make growth now is more than just what you see on this page. So we're actually at the high school adding U S history and biology this year in addition to the English one, English two and Algebra. So we're doing a pre-test at the beginning of the year and then we'll do a real assessment that is the start test at the end of the year and be able to measure growth within those additional subjects. You'll never see that on this graphic, but we will see it hopefully in the data that we share with you through T I A later in the, um, B C G process. And then in addition to that, hopefully we'll see it in teachers' pocketbooks because they will be making the incentive for the growth of their students. So there's a little bit more incentive that's behind it as well and the other campuses are working on that too. But unfairly, you look at a graphic that's not measuring the entire campus for that one dimension, it is just measuring two courses.
And please do not think I was being rude of you.
Absolutely not, no. Thank you.
I have an overall picture of you asking your questions this time. And we're talking about three things, it's very transparent to us too, right? Long deep there. You got any questions, we'll transparent our answers.
And we have to have questions to arrive at.
By all means, as we, right, we're all about it. But at the end of the day, we're all the same then, right? We want students to succeed. And nobody that we have in any one of our campuses is going to get up in the morning and say, I want to fail. If they are, they're probably not working at all. You know, as Mr. Wilson said before, as you said, Mr. Robinson, you can see the difference in the culture exchange. You either go in our direction or you're going another. That's it. Don't have time to wait. Alright, so we're moving in the right direction. These people right here are making that happen. So our district recruitment plan, we have a variety of different goals. Question you might ask is first off, why do we need to do that or why is it more good? Look, if you don't have a plan, you're not gonna, not gonna move forward at all. Really appreciate this. Proper prior planning prevents painful performance change stuff. So it does prevent painful performance. We have to have a plan. We have to have an understanding where we're going. From one point, we have to have a goal. What do you want to achieve, right? Is it you want to boost some weight, you want to feel a little better, you want to read more books, whatever that looks like. Our ideas, this is where it starts. A comprehensive needs assessment, so take a look and see all our data, see what we're lacking and what we need to do. Whether it's self-criticism, graphics, you asked that question of what do we need? That's when we start asking that question. What is it we're looking for and then how can we achieve that? Because my role is to remove all the barriers for them so they can do their job. They call me and they make it happen. That's how it works. That's what the goal is for us here so that they can work. District goals and performance objectives, we have outlined those. All this stuff comes to student outcome and teacher growth. Now generally, you'd always think about student outcomes, but understanding that the students are getting better, it only stands to reason that we are growing our teachers. That's why I had a good for sure, for a lot of different reasons, that's why logic is so important. We have six goals in this district for our recruitment plan. I've got an overview here, we're gonna break it down a couple at a time. You can see each one outlines which direction we're gonna go. I'll just sum it up for you. Quite simply put, our goal is focused on student success by creating a positive environment and making sure we're getting the best people to work here. That's it. We don't, we put in a letter here, we monitor this, we monitor progress throughout the years. A couple times, I'll go back and check this. I'll talk it over to Mr. Townsend when we're at, we'll check some data and we'll go forward with that. Each one of these goals has a performance objective, which tells us this is how we're going to do it. And under that objective, we have to do strategies along with actions to achieve that. Um, I'll give you all three, establish positive school classroom culture by continuous teaching and modeling. Respect among all students, personal and community, that's been a goal for Bay City I S T for lots of time. And it's a good goal to have. It's good to have, just not for the staff, but for the students as well. And how can we achieve that? Well, we measure by seeing if we're using, we're hitting the slippiness of those tests on those performance objectives with the strategies and actions that we have in place. And for us to integrate the most up-to-date technology, you know, Mr. Robinson's team does a great job with that, making sure that we are not just having the hardware, but we also on the curriculum side are examining, are looking for always software to make it easier for our students to learn more and for our teachers to have a better experience while they're doing their job. Bay City will integrate instructional practices to develop our environments that are applicable to real-world experiences. Yes, that is true. Want to make sure that our students understand what it is to be a citizen in society so that they can relate to their work. We talk about engaging a student, how to engage a student, what you make relative to what it is at their house. If they have an understanding of what culture looks like, our other goal, she was about building positive relationships. You have to do that, you'll do that and you can't do this. So all these things are intertwined to each other. And our last goal here is to keep and get good people. How are we doing this? Well, I'm personally taking off to the university, I've been back to university a long time. Next week, with a couple of teachers who are gonna find some talent. And we're working on special programs so we can find some other people that are very specialized for kids. Right? If you ask what can we give, we might answer that a little later, if anyone will find. These positions are very specific, like we need them. So we have, uh, four recruitment trips at universities here playing. Also other teachers and other people, I'm just kind of fit the victory charm right now. So I'm kind of going into these things as well. And so what they drive, we're gonna recruit. And it's not me doing it, it's the teachers, that's, that's kind of, right? They're fake, they're gonna talk about what their quality of life isn't worth, they're the ones you're gonna make, those people come, they're the ones that you keep. So when you look at it overall, our goals never change. You should always keep your goal the same, but your plan always will change. I hope it does. If it's not changing, then you're not gonna achieve your goal. Things happen out of your control, which is gonna require your plan to change. But I believe that we can see all of these things inside here, with the high school, Cherry, Tini High, Roberts, Tini Homes. Well, when they all work together, that we're gonna achieve what we need to, right? Goals never change. Uh, I believe that these people are doing, I feel like. So y'all have any questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, your time.
Appreciate it. Alright. There is item B under Bay City governance, we're talking about superintendent constraints. Uh, we will talk about this a little bit, or we will talk about goals. But I just want to jump in there, not skipping it, but we will loop that in with superintendent goals when we get to that to these. Uh, so we're gonna keep on moving to reports, discussion and review of Bay City I S T multi-hazard emergency operations plan and active threat.
Yes, so, um, you know, I guess having board book, uh, the, uh, the emergency E O P plan and the active threat annex, uh, there's a lot of information there. This is not an action item for the board, uh, just more of an informational piece around the P D, uh, and Officer Lewis in particular has really been working on updating this. Uh, it's due, uh, we turned in, uh, October second, but she's way ahead of the game. Uh, and so, uh, anyway, these are, uh, filled with all of the best practices, uh, for emergency management, for, during, after an emergency, uh, and how it's gonna be handled and outlined explicitly in these plans. Uh, so, um, we will be submitting these after this meeting, uh, but it's more of an informational piece where you guys will put your eyes on it. And not only to see that we have everything in place, but also what a tremendous amount of work goes into developing these. It's massive, uh, it's super important, um, and we wouldn't want to trust it to anybody else under our Bay City meetings, so we appreciate it. Uh, is there any question that you have about it or anything?
I just have a general comment, I think on campus and I'm over the last couple of years, we get a lot of negative feedback through social media about how come you didn't call me right away? But I'm, I'm glad that every single staff member, every single leader in the district has always placed the priority on safety on the student first. And then their communication piece comes right after it. So thank you, um, for everything that you've done for over the last few years and, and will continue to do when it comes to managing these.
I'll use to bring up, or P D does a great job managing this, we appreciate it.
We have a question. Alright, moving on to the next report, discussion of solar connected possible presentation at October four.
So, uh, we are actually going to next this. I'll tell you why. Originally, we were, uh, looking at solar connecting proposal for us to, uh, see if we were able to generate some revenue for the district with no cost to the district. Uh, but, uh, Mr. Luzeck is working with them and, uh, it turns out that if we are not going to have, uh, we would either have to pass a bond or do a second loan. Um, the investor side, where we had talked about there being investor to pay for the equipment upfront, they would take so much of what the return is of that energy that we would really not see much at all. Uh, so we would have to go with the route of, of securing a loan or, or doing, but doing a bond. We are not in the position to do that. Um, so this is a, this, I don't feel comfortable bringing a proposal to you at this time, so we're gonna take that off. That was hot off the press today that he'd be informing about that. So we're gonna move on with that.
Alright. Thank you. Alright, items of business, reservation and approval of campus improvement plan and district improvement plan goals for twenty-five, twenty-six. Yes, I was about to say, so we went over that, does anyone have any questions? And it is an item of business, so we do need a motion to approve both of the, the campus improvement and the district improvement. If no one has any questions. Alright, is there a motion to be made?
Motion for approval of the campus improvement plan and district improvement plan goals for twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Alright, there's a motion on the table, let's enter second to the motion. Alright, we have a first and a second, any further conversation, questions? Hearing that, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes four to zero.
Before you go into the next, uh, because our new CFO is here to talk to you about that. And before I introduce her, I want to recognize, uh, Mr. Villenez, uh, he's our upcoming CFO and I just wanted to, uh, for bridging the gap and doing an excellent job during trying times. Uh, we appreciate you very much, we're giving this very, very much. Um, and later we'll work very together in this transition. Um, and so it's gonna be a good thing, uh, both ways. I know that Vince is gonna be moving on and, uh, doing things that a young man does. So we're, we're looking forward to that for him and we just want to tell you thank you, Vince, very much. Uh, and then I want to take this opportunity to introduce our new chief financial officer, Ms. Vera Turner. Again, she'll, I'm gonna announce that next thing, she'll take it there.
Alright, thank you, Vince, for everything that you've done and that you've worked tirelessly for this mission. Truly, truly appreciate it.
I think Vince can sort of go wrong. Yeah, thank you.
Alright, so we'll move on to item B, discuss and consider approval of self-certification of increased micro purchase thresholds.
First of all, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you for allowing me to be here in front of you as a chief financial officer and allowing us to have that, that crossover time with Vince. Uh, it has truly been valuable and, and the opportunity that I've had to meet some of you already, I really appreciate that. Uh, the agenda item that you have before you is a standard generic item that we need to go ahead and we need to submit to the state. It does align with your local board policy already, so this is just, uh, a really quick, uh, approval for micro purchasing threshold, uh, we will submit this statement, so it aligns with your policy.
Great. Does anyone have any questions? Alright. Is there a motion to be made?
Most of the approved self-certification increase micro purchase threshold.
Alright, is there a second to the motion? Alright, we have a first and a second, any further conversations? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes four to zero. On to item C, discuss and consider approval of the proposal for Vator consulting service.
So in your board book, you have a package from, uh, a package from Advantage. Um, they are a consulting firm that helps specializes in schools passing bond, mostly Vaters. Um, and so, uh, we've done a lot of research and, uh, I've talked to a lot of companies. I've been very fortunate with the new superintendent cabinet to be able to be face-to-face with a lot of experienced superintendents and the new ones, uh, that they're teaching. Uh, and over the last year, we've talked to many different people, Advantage's been highly recommended, they have a high success rate, uh, helping districts get their way very fast. Um, and, uh, the people that I have talked to, uh, they have echoed that, um, and their name keeps showing up over and over again. Uh, we had an initial meeting with them, I would say it was spring of last year, cabinet, wasn't it? I think so. Uh, and they, uh, they kind of presented to us what, what they could do for us, it was pretty impressive. Uh, so what we would do is we would, uh, contract with them, um, and the services that we, uh, that we receive are in this package. Um, they are not cheap, um, but they are good. Um, and so inside my heart, I've thought about it a couple of times, can we run this without it? Um, but I also know that if we ran it, if we didn't win it, I would always say, we should have done it. Uh, and I will also tell you that we may have some opportunities to offset this cost, uh, on two different fronts. I've been talking to the foundation, uh, on working to see what they can, we can help us out. But also I've been, uh, talking to a community member who has, uh, a lot of resources, um, and wants to step up in a big way and help fundraise to help fund this initiative when we run the Vator. Um, so I feel like this will probably be wiped out at some point that is not a guarantee. Um, but even if it is not, take that off the table, uh, let's say that nobody's gonna help us with that cost. I think that, uh, spending this money to help guarantee that we get the money we need in district open is worthy investment. Uh, and so that's, that's my recommendation. In order to do that, you know, we did not pick everything that is in available for them, uh, their services, their different options you can pick from. Uh, we picked options one. Options four and options five. We were not going to pick option seven, which is a, uh, it's a, it's a community opinion survey. Um, in our minds, we're talking about a cabinet, we didn't see the value in that. Um, but, uh, by happenstance, when I was talking to one of the superintendents that sits next to me at the last academy, uh, he, uh, he ran a Vator last year, it failed. Um, he is in the middle of running a Vator now and he did, he was not going to do that party. He hired, uh, this company this year to do it. And so he said, man, I'm not, I don't want to do that community opinion survey. And I said, well, it's gonna be, you're gonna miss a lot because that covers so much of what we're gonna be able to do for you. And he said that, um, what it has done for him is, is that they take that information and they overlay it on whatever group it is that you're working with. So whatever, if you're going to a chamber, if you're going to a church, if you're going to whatever, they take that opinion and information and they overlay it and they show what is important to those individuals that you're going to talk to. And he said that every single time that he goes to speak and present to a different group, that it has helped him pinpoint, um, his message to them on things that they are most interested about hearing and not a whole lot of other things that they're not. And he said that the feedback that he's gotten this year when he does that is tremendous to post when he did it on his own last year and he feels like it's gonna be highly effective. And, uh, really, really felt like, man, I would, I said, well, so you're telling me you wouldn't do it without him? He said, I would not do it without him. So, uh, we are, uh, we want to be one, four, five, and seven, that would come to a total of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
Anything more?
Two hundred and fifty-seven thousand and five hundred dollars. And so what I'm asking the board is to consider this and to approve us, uh, contracting with them for that.
So we're not, we're not, uh, to that, to make sense?
Yes, so, but here's one of the things, there's been a couple of points where I, I can't talk about this anymore. And I don't know where that is. And there, and there are the people that will help guide me and us and say, hey, hey superintendent, now's the time, you gotta stop, you gotta stop saying this. You know, there's a lot of just intricacies. And so if we start now preparing for that, I can start consulting with them and, because it may be even the next month or so, I don't know, but, but I, there's only so much I can say. So yes, it's for the Vator twenty-two, twenty-six.
Okay, and I've written my some of the people that you mentioned that's listed too. I think, you're correct. Where we are right now financially, that's a lot of gifts and wins. So can we make sure, is it any way to say, oh, I know the education foundation, that's a whole lot. So, I mean, it's nobody.
Yeah. Because really, even if they said, yeah, we want to do it, the funds that they raise is still, it's not, we don't know for sure, not a sure thing. Right? And so what I would say is when you're making this decision, to make it as if we're not gonna get any assistance. And that's why I say, in my opinion, uh, to the board, my recommendation is, is that it would be better for us to have this. If we don't pass the Vator, we all know what's gonna happen, what it looks like. And if we don't pass it and we haven't utilized everything at our disposal, I think we're. And if we don't pass it and we haven't utilized everything at our disposal, I think we're going to look back and say, we should have done that within their position.
And it's going to work with the board as well, or the clubs.
Correct, they, they will, the board, the board, they'll also, they're, they will, they will help and organize that steering committee. Pair or steering committee, if people come forward and want to be a part of that, they will organize all, they, they play a heavy end and everything. Everything you can imagine. So yes, they will work.
So you need to answer.
That's what I'm asking for, just.
And two, the options four?
Four, five, seven.
One, four, one, five, seven.
Not sure. One is the main package. And then four, five, seven are avenues.
Yes.
Yeah. So that's the district homepage, postings, the website overhaul, audit corrections. And then five is the community Vator steering committee and seven is that survey. Now I'll just put it to a vote that we could make a motion if we want to be talking about it.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve proposal for Vator Consulting Services and present in board book options one, four, five, and seven.
All right, there's a motion on the table. Is there a second to the motion? All right, there's a second to the motion. Any further questions, conversations? All right, hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you, I appreciate the support on this.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, moving on. Discuss and consider approval of designation of investment officer resolution.
I've got a couple of them, so I'm just going to stay standing for the next couple of them. So designation of investment officer resolution, as in stepping out, he was your, your current investment officer. So we have to just make a new investment officer. So all that is, is just designate myself in there and it will be the second, you have to have a second. So standard, standard designation on that one.
All right, any questions? Is there a motion to be made? Well, there's one of it.
The one.
Yeah. Investment officer.
Yes. So there's been a motion made for designation of investment officer. Is there a second to the motion? I'll second it. All right, all in favor? High, opposed, motion passes four to zero. Item E. Discuss and consider approval of the launch of the RFQ for Realtors.
So we discussed this about going out to qualifications on Realtors so that we could anticipate forward with Pierce O'Redeem. And so the business department has worked hard on putting a question for qualifications package together. She's going to talk to you a little bit about that tonight. We're asking for your permission to go ahead and move forward and launch that.
So the RFQ that we've stated in here is going to be for the sale of property at twenty four Fort Quaid Avenue. We are going to be asking for Realtors to come forward to present that for sale. It does have a little bit of specificity with it, with that historical commission designation. So we have to make sure that we make essentially pass by who has some background with that. We will be posting this RFQ if you approve it. And we'll call it for it in the papers. So that will have to be posted for two weeks. We'll also post it on our website. We'll send it off to whatever local Realtors that we'll have. We'll give the local Realtors a chance to go ahead and bid for that. The submission deadline will be November third, and that will be kind of a committee to get together. So we'll get those sealed proposals, we'll open those, and then we'll go ahead and, and score those and bring recommendations to you as far as which Realtor. This contract is expendable. So if we want to use it for another real estate property, potentially later on, we can. However, if the Realtor that we choose, we would like to part ways with them. We could potentially do that with this contract as well. We'll set out to either stay with them or to go out for another RFQ or RFQ for the other properties that we made.
Great. Are there any questions?
Yes. I'm interested in Chris. So you said something about the landlord and he was, and maybe some issues with him.
We just want somebody who is familiar with that historical designation, who may potentially know how to work with the state with that. I know that Mr. Townsend has also been looking to, at first.
Yeah, so on the Piers there, it's, it's a subject marker. So there's no restrictions with anything as far as the building. We wanted to tear the building down, whoever buys it, if they wanted to demolish, there's, there's nothing associated with that. Oh, she just said that we want to make sure that because it does have a historical business mission, that it would be good that if whatever Realtor we have has some experience with that, should there be anything that arises with it? Because right now, we don't foresee anything, but it would be good if they could have.
And they want to just put this on the next, the next meeting. But same time I heard the landlord. So are we placing the landlord of these buildings to later be considered to be possibly removed or sent somewhere else on the real?
No, and, and I, you know, I wasn't around with the Piers or, and I think Alster. Yes, those are all subject markers, so they're not on. But I think Lenny Roberts was very unique because it was not in accordance with all the others that were in the district. And it was, had a lot more power to it because it was on the building itself as well. And so, but no, I, my understanding is, is that you would not have to remove any of that. And there wouldn't even be a discussion about it for Lenny Roberts if that was not part of the building piece. So the Piers, my understanding is, is that that wouldn't have to be removed, that wouldn't have to be disturbed. But again, it's important for us, if we do have Realtors who have some experience with that, to be able to have that discussion with any potential buyers.
Questions?
It's not in board book. Are we approving the actual document that we can see?
No, you don't have to. Is it approved that they just moved for the launch?
Okay. For I just want to be clear.
All right, is there a motion to be made?
Make the motion to approve the launch of RFQ.
All right, there's a motion on the table. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll say.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor? High, opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Just, item F. Discuss and consider approval of resolution and nomination of candidate to serve as PCI State Representative on the Mattel County Central Appraisal District Board of Directors for two, two-year term beginning January first, twenty twenty six, and ending December thirty first, twenty twenty seven.
Yes, so I sent you guys an email outlining information about this. And so I was able to speak to Mr. Early to see if he would be willing to continue to serve. And he is. It's not a commitment for you, but I wanted to make sure that you had an idea of somebody if you wanted to nominate him again, to care for it, that he would accept that. If you gave you more information about it, other than what I provided, let me know.
Yeah, that's all I can say with you, but that's just okay. So there's a now, today at least.
Right, unless you guys have somebody in mind that, you know, spoke to somebody or, you know. What I've noticed is, is that, that appears in smaller school districts, they end up having to put somebody from their work there. So, but yeah, I, I don't know if anybody else would want to. And I'll only give that kind of as a courtesy for you guys to say, hey, you know, if you don't have anybody else in mind, he's done a great job and he's willing to continue.
And is it a deadline?
Yes, that's why we have to put it on because it's until fourteen.
Four, yes.
Four, the next one.
It's sixteen, I think it's sixteen.
I think it's the fourteen.
Fourteen.
Is this a home to me? Is, is he someone we can meet?
You probably have been before. Uh, you know, it's early speaking, or early speaking.
Down for our representative.
But no, I mean, I'm sure he would, and he did mention that, you know, we're, any of us are welcome to go to the meetings that they have. And, you know, so if we want you to come, I can ask you if you guys want to meet or, you know, meet this up or whatever you want to do.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have a communication, while we can, we do have a talk with, it's easier for them. I'm tired.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll reach out to him and get you, get you a cover. And if you have a conversation, they fit together, we can work on it.
Okay.
All right, any other questions or comments? Is there a motion to be made?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution in nomination of Frank Hurley to serve as PCI State Representative on the Mattel County Central Appraisal District Board of Directors for a two-year term beginning January first, two thousand twenty six, and ending December thirty first, two thousand twenty seven.
Great, there's a motion on the table. Is there a second to the motion? All right, we have a first and a second. Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor? High, opposed? Motion passes four to zero.
When you get into the consent agenda, I wanted to allow her an opportunity to just, she gives you guys a different view of the board.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Sure. Yes, so we're going to move on into the consent agenda before we jump into the financial report. Is there anything that anybody would like to have our food from us? All right, is there a motion to be made?
The motion to approve the consent, like, you know, as presented.
All right, is there a second to the motion?
I'm sorry, Chris.
All right, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so at the consent, in the consent agenda, you have a financial report in there. I have, sorry, don't do that, I'm sorry. Um, I just want to talk you through very quickly because it's, it does look a lot different than, than what you are used to. And so that way you know exactly what we'll be providing you. She's still very humble. She's been absolutely amazing, so we have to look at. Yeah. I, yeah, I promise next time I'll go down to what I see.
No problem. I appreciate you going over it so we.
And while she was up there, I wanted to let her know that she rocked. That Friday, the night she had the baby, all huddled up and she's taking notes and taking pictures. And her husband over here on the sideline, I thought, oh my God. She is up and sitting down on the floor with the baby, with the baby, holding, trying to get it. That was awesome, yeah.
Thank you so very much. Sorry, I put it on solid. Perfect. Okay, so if you, if you want over there, I'll just work off of this frame. Through there, so the very first page is going to be your general operating. So this is your one, six, one through one, nine, nine revenues. And this is going to be broken down into what we're expecting for taxes current year, all of the other things. The bottom line on there is going to be in blue. You'll notice right now that we're seeing at about one point one three percent of our revenue collected July and August for school districts. Really, truly, you don't get a lot of your revenue in July. I obviously start seeing your revenue start coming in in September with those first FSP payments. So we are expecting our first FSP payment to be around five point three million dollars. And we should be getting that sometime around the twenty fifth. And that's going to be for the twenty five, twenty six school year. And we may potentially even see a settle up from last year. So when you're looking at that first page, that is going to be your revenue statement. So you'll see exactly all the different revenues to the district. The second page that you're going to see is going to be your expenditures. So this is exactly where we are with all of our different, through all of our different funds. Where are we with instructional? Where are we with the library? Where are we with per month? How much is designated for that with the annual budget and the current year to date with that? You'll see the nice little handy dandy graph there as well. That'll show you kind of where we've budgeted and where our expenditures are. So that should give you a very good kind of general overview of that. In terms of August, it's like an eight percent every month. So we want to, we want to kind of be at sixteen percent in that year's day budget. At the bottom, it's fifteen point seven X. So we're seeing right underneath that sixteen percent, which is good. I'm expecting that number to probably trend down a little bit as, as we kind of go into the year. Everybody's doing such a fantastic job, principals, thank you so much. And everybody else, thank you so much for, for helping us to kind of crunch that budget deficit and, and kind of correct that. So I think we're going to see that trending down. The next page is going to be fund five, nine, nine. So this is your INS. You'll see any tax payment, any expenditures, any revenue. I've got kind of some information about our payments that are in there. On the next page is going to be our cafeteria. And these are the generic funds that you have to see as a board. The cafeteria has a very healthy fund balance right now. They operate separately from one, nine, nine. So you actually will probably see some expenditures from them to draw that down. They're going to have to spend potentially about three hundred thousand dollars this year in equipment to draw that down. Otherwise, they'll have to potentially return that back to the state. So you'll start carrying some of that clean up in the next few months. And the final page in your financial report are going to be bank balances. I want you to see how much you're actually are sitting with general operating and in your INS account. And we have a general operating, we have a money market account, and then we have a pool. Next month, you will see me grant to you potentially us going a different pool that has a higher interest rate. I want to start making more off of that money. I want to start moving that money into those higher interest rate categories so we go ahead and we can start getting more bank for our buck. And so we'll be having those conversations very shortly. But this is how your financial reports should start looking from here on out. If there's anything else you'd like to start seeing, let me know and I'll see if I can go ahead and provide that to you. And in a way, that's, that's easy for you to read, so.
Great, thank you so much. You're welcome. All right, are there any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent?
All right.
High, opposed? Motion passes four to zero. All right, we're going to move into closed session for two items of business. Personal matters are necessary, but we take them in a closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code five, five, one dot zero, seven, four to deliver the appointment, employment evaluation, resignation, reassignment duties, discipline, resignation, dismissal of public officer, employee, including contract regulations for campus administration, public administration, teachers. And item two, Texas Government Code five, five, one dot zero, seven, six, security personnel devices or audits. The board will convene in the closed session to discuss the deployment as for specific occasions for employment implementation, sorry, of security personnel or devices of security. All right, we'll move into closed session at seven twenty seven.
Motion of number one, just sorry, discussing consider approval of hiring contractual personnel is our motion to be made.
Our motion that we approve hiring of contractual personnel is presented.
Alright, is there a second to the motion? All in favor?
Um.
Aye, opposed, motion passes four to zero.
I don't know if we have to see what the order is.
Alright, last item of business is adjournment, is there a motion to be made? Alright, is there a second to the motion?
I'll start at the most.
Alright, all, any further comments, questions, all in favor? Aye, opposed, motion passes four to zero at this rule adjournment speed at eight twenty nine PM.